Five o'clock. We'll have the recessed boiling fish.
I put it back in your face.
I was talking to everybody in the public while I go didn't know it. It hurt every cigarette I had. We'll have. Call order, please. James, take a roll.
Yes, sir. And this is for our forum. Mayor Owens present?
Here.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Selby. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Mann.
Here.
Commissioner Borland.
Here.
And Commissioner Burke. All right. Hearing none on the virtual.
Is Richie on the telephone?
It looks like he's according to our IT director, he's not on. But Mr. Mayor, you do have a quorum.
I just asked. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got a quorum.
I think he's working.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda with an amendment to add resolution 202104 to old business.
I'll second.
All right, motion second. The motion, all in favor, take a roll, call them.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
All right. And Commissioner Burke is not present. Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
Okay. Go ahead, James. Presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three on the agenda. This would be presentations and reports. And we are so pleased for item 3A on the agenda. This is a proclamation. And if it's all right, we will be bringing up, bringing our special guests up front in a moment. But with the mayor's dispensation, I'll read the proclamation for the public. This is a proclamation honoring Postmaster Patty Callum.
Let's have Patty come up. I know who she is. Not many people know who she is.
Whereas, the town of Manio desires to commend and recognize an individual who gave of herself, her time, her talent, and her efforts to make our community a better place in which to live. And whereas, Patty Callum has dedicated herself to the Manio post office for over 38 years of service. And whereas, Patty has embraced the motto of the postal service. Neither snow nor rain nor heat nor gloom of night stays these couriers from the swift completion of their pointed rounds. And whereas, Patty has served the citizens of Manio and Dare County faithfully with a smile and a kind word. It is the hope of the town of Manio that all citizens will recognize the hard work and dedication of Patty Callum. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Bobby Owens and the Town of Manio Board of Commissioners, they do hereby commend, recognize, and express their gratitude to Patty Callum and urge all citizens to congratulate her on her accomplishment and recognize the exemplary work and service throughout her tenure. Furthermore, be it hereby recognized on this 19th day of May, 2021, that Patty Callum will now and forevermore be an honorary citizen of the town of Manio. This, the 19th day of May, 2021.
This is since my attention span is about 20 seconds these days, I decided, since I knew this is going to happen, to jot just a few things down so I wouldn't regret not having said something profound, I'm sure. Wow, 38 years. Where did the time go? Call it fate, divine intervention, or just plain luck? I will forever be grateful for having made the left of the bakery so many years ago and found myself in downtown Manny. I'm going to cry and I don't want to. I was on my way to California in a Volkswagen Bug, two golden retrievers, a cat. And I came to visit some friends. They convinced me that if I got homesick, Manio was the lackluster New Jersey in California. I'm so glad I took their advice. I found Manio so quaint, so charming, and full of fun. I fell instantly in love with the area. Another bit of luck, after much prodding from John Garrison, found me getting hired at the Manio post office. It was such a blessing in disguise. I can tell you that I loved my job at first. It kind of grew on me. That job isn't for everybody, and some folks would find it mundane. But I relish in it because of the people. Oh, the people. Over the course of some 38 years, Daryl is just a big. Our lives became entwined, our families became entwined. We've shared the laughter, the celebration of birthdays, weddings, babies, and much more. We have shared the anxiety of the doctor's appointments, the few moments of conversation each day with the lonely, and God, the tears. The tears from the news that one of my tribe, that alas, they're moving on to bigger, better things, or just closer to be with their family. The worst is the news of losing their loved ones, because which in turn became my loved ones. And sometimes the grief was palatable for both of us. I'll read faster. I can truly say that they've left a legacy of not being forgotten. Box seven. No matter who comes after Mrs. Bell Tilly, she'll always be box two. Miss Bonner, box 157, scroll green 237, I'm sure Evans, 381, Mr. Ruffin, 1337, and it goes on. I've always felt that the post office is like the face of Manio. We've been the tourist bureau, the direction coordinator, a restaurant critic, and just a friendly place to drop a postcard off. We've been very connected to here, to my career here. Sometimes in my career, I was given the moniker of post office Patty. Guess who gave it to me? Courthouse daddy. She and I got a kick out of the fact that half the post didn't know her last name. Of course, I didn't do this job by myself. I've had the honor of working with some incredible people. We started out as postmasters and coworkers, but have developed lifelong friendships that still bears witness today. Each one is just as deserving of this honor as I am. And I say, I feel like this is my Oscar. I'm truly humbled by this recognition, and I'm going to sorely miss seeing each of you regularly every day. That's the hard part. It will be an adjustment, but I know that this day would one day come. And I put it off for about five years. So I want to especially thank my family, who supported me. They're here today. Through the years when I missed the ballgames, school events, other events because of my work schedule, and for all the help stuffing the Walmart's and Kmart's, we'll keep you no doubt. I would also like to give a special thank you to Warren, Kathy, and Warren Bourne for making this happen. I was going to try and slink out the back door like JJ, but I have one more personal thank you, and that is to my partner in crime, Jerry Smallnier. He has to live with me. And good God help him on the days there's no wine. This small quaint little town of Manio has enriched my life beyond measure. And I'm forever grateful for making this town, make a girl feel welcome and loved after all these years. Manio is my hometown. Everyone asks what I'm going to be doing next. I don't know. I'm a bit anxious, I bet, because I'm institutionalized for so long. So I'm fond of adventures and flying by the seat of my pants. So I'm looking forward to seeing where the blue wonder takes me. Maybe I'll write a book about all the postal stories, or if I got a song. One thing I do know, first thing, I'm officially shutting off the alarm clock. Be well, and I will see you all around town. Jenny, this is wonderful. Thank you so much.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
No, go on up. Thank you, Patty.
All right, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up on the agenda, item number 3B. This is actually a presentation by Mr. Matthew Sells, who's representing the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And with us also, we have Chief Haskett and Lieutenant Eiler from the Manio Police Department. Mr. Sells, if you'd like.
Hello, my name is Matthew Sells. I'm the Public Safety Risk Manager with the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I'd like to thank Mayor Owens and the Manio Board of Commissioners for this time and recognizing the Manio Police Department for completing the North Carolina League's Law Enforcement Risk Review Program. The risk review involves a very comprehensive agency review of high-risk policies, operations, and practices, and includes a detailed onsite agency administrative and operations review, including equipment, facility inspections, officer interviews, observations of operations, all to validate that practices align with policies and in turn with industry's best practices. We specifically look at high liability areas within the departments that consist of police vehicle operations, response to resistance, active resistance, evidence processing, employment practices and procedures, training. In addition to many other categories, there's 36 categories in all that we look at. The review is ordered by the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police. And I'm proud to report this evening that the Manio Police Department has successfully completed the law enforcement risk review process. The chief and the department staff, command staff prioritized this initiative and made this process a department priority. The department was very proactive and involved during the whole process. I want to personally thank Chief Haskett, the lieutenant, and other officers with the leader, for their leadership and their willingness to take, to participate in this very important initiative. They were very open and transparent during the whole process. I myself have spent 24 years in law enforcement, 12 years as a police chief in Iredale County of Troutman, North Carolina area, and worked with numerous agencies across the state. And the officers that I worked with and observed and demonstrated a high level of commitment to their communities in order to enhance professional policing and to positively impact the community and relationship with the communities. Again, I'd like to congratulate Manio, North Carolina, Manio Police Department for this initiative. And I'd like to present a plaque to the chief if he is available.
And Mr. Mayor, if it's all right, we'll have Mr. Sells come forward. But also, I'd like to make sure Chief Haskett comes up. We also have Lieutenant Eiler present, and we, and previously, we had our administrator, Kelly Burton, present as well. And I'm trying to see around the, trying to see around there if we could have the initial presentation for Mr. Sells to Chief Haskett. But then after that, I'd like a picture of all of our team from the Manio Police Department. And I want to make sure to recognize Ms. Burton as well. So please, y'all come forward.
So this is the flag that we needed. You are all interested in the process. Last one that I completed was. So, but that basically recognizes many of the departments. There's an office person who is providing services. And a professional man will take steps in harness risk to citizens and officers.
If it's all right, we would like the whole team to do that.
This is the long time coming. This is my fourth year of Manio.
Thank you.
We'll tell you, just like we tell everybody else, please keep coming back.
Oh, I will, yes. Now we need to get the other agencies that belong in Dare County to take a quick process to thank.
Thank you.
So it's a challenge.
All right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Next up on the agenda, item 3C. This is our portion called Department Head Reports. Now, as part of the agenda package, there were written reports that were provided both to the board and to the general public as well. And we would welcome, folks, go to manioonc.gov and see those written reports that give detailed background on operations and all the things going on behind the scenes. We do have today a brief video, and this is the latest installment of the Manio Minute. And our IT director, Carl Woody, is going to be putting that on the screen for your enjoyment.
Hi, I'm Michelle Buntz.
And I'm Carl Woody. Welcome back to the Manio Minute. We are standing here in the newly completed Town Common. What is the definition of a Town Common?
Woody, I'm not exactly sure what the definition of a Town Common is, but that's why we have Melissa Dickerson.
The Manio Town Common is a result of great community planning. We also have some wonderful partners in Dare County and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau. The Manio Town Common is a parking lot with 60 parking spaces, a very lush green space. We have bicycle racks, a bicycle repair station, and walking paths that go through the green space.
That's some great news about the Town Common. We have some other great openings as well, such as the Lighthouse and the Boathouse Museum, which will be open Saturdays from 10 to 4 p.m.
Thanks, Carl. And don't forget, the Downtown Market is opening this year, and it will be open on Saturdays, and will run to September 18th. Be from 8 a.m. to noon. There's tons of great stuff there at the market, artisans, food, and so much more. And we are so excited and can't wait to see everybody there this year. It's right on the beautiful downtown waterfront of Manio. It is a must-see and a must-do here in Manio. And that's another episode of the Manio Minute.
Thanks for watching.
Well, thanks so much for the opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on behind the scenes. And of course, we would welcome our public to subscribe to our YouTube channel, as well as our social media on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Next up on the agenda, this is item four. This is the public hearing. This is item 4A. It's a public hearing for the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. In this particular case, there has been a significant interaction with the public over the last number of months, from everything from community needs assessments, public comment periods, outreach, and more. And we had had a presentation on the budget, including both a slideshow, the budget message, as well as the actual budget ordinance at the last meeting. Of course, this is an important part of the statute that has a public hearing for one last chance after multiple opportunities for the public to make a, to comment on the budget. So in accordance with the statute, this will be the time for us to open a public hearing and see if the public would like to comment.
All right, we establish a public hearing. We've got to have a motion though, James.
Yes, sir.
And we have a motion on public hearing for, I mean, on the fiscal year 2122 budget.
My motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Motion second. We open the public hearing for the fiscal year 202122 budget. Take a roll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
Okay, go ahead, James. Let me say this for the public. This is not going to be too long, but at least you'll have a chance to find out where your money is going. So please bear with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The floor is open. So first, we'll take people in the audience who want to comment on this before we go to our virtual participants. So if anybody would like to comment on the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget, the, please approach a lectern, state your name and your location, and your comment. All right. Seeing no takers from the audience here in person, we're going to go to the virtual audience. So for those who are attending virtually, please hit star nine on your phone or raise your hand if you're on your computer, and you'll be recognized. You'll be recognized for your chance to participate. All right. For those by phone, it's star nine, raise your hand. Or if you're on the computer, just hit the raise hand button on your Zoom. All right, Mr. Mayor, I do not see anybody raising their hand on the virtual environment, and it looks like we don't have anybody on the floor.
Whatever I like to be heard on the budget. All right, we'll close the hearing. Go ahead, James.
Yes, sir. And this would require a motion to close the public hearing with a motion, a second, and a vote.
I move to close the public hearing on fiscal year 2122.
Second. All right, move, start with closing the hearing on the 2122 fiscal budget. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, iron A. Commissioner Walker, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, iron A. Commissioner Borland, iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, iron A.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
All right, take off, James.
Yes, sir. Item number five on the agenda. This is public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourself and location so that your statements can be reported. So I guess, in accordance with our custom, we'll start with the folks in the audience here present at Town Hall. And for anybody who'd like to approach the lectern here, please identify yourself and your location.
Getting more comfortable with public speaking, which I don't really like. Um, so my name is Melissa Bender, and I reside at 716 North George House Street, which is directly across the street from the current home that they are proposing to add units to. I would like to start by saying that it is my sincere hope that the Board of Commissioners will follow the multiple recommendations of the planning board to deny this conditional use permit. As an adjacent property owner, I have many reasons for which I also believe it should be denied. First, this permit is to allow the owner to exceed the density currently allowed within the town limits. My question is, does the town really want to open the door to others to request the same changes when several motels already serve the requested purpose and are located within blocks and are rarely at capacity? Second, as I understand it, as of today, because the specifics keep changing, even during these meetings, the plan is to have units with no kitchen available for daily or weekly rental. There will be no office or anyone on premise to supervise this small hotel. And this project does nothing to help the housing problem in this area. It will be another expensive, short-term rental machine. I am seeing a cluster of Airbnb properties purely for the profit, at, purely for profit and at the expense of the town of Manio and the residents of North George House Street. Third, I would like for you to consider the property value of every home on North George House Street. Many of the owners are working-class individuals that struggle to make ends meet on a monthly basis. What will happen to the value of our properties if this proposal is approved? We have been enjoying an influx of young families with small children. What will the impact of this daily or weekly turnover and traffic due to our up-and-coming community? Can you put a price on that? I can't. Fourth, the flooding. It has been an issue since I purchased my home two and a half years ago. Amazing how this drain, the drainage ditches have suddenly been cleaned, but I have yet to see that it has resolved the flooding problem. Who will be responsible if this project is passed and becomes a direct cause of flooding to homes and businesses in this area? In closing, I would like to say thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for listening to my concerns. I stand here before you frustrated that I continue to have to speak out against this project. I, like all of you, want to see Manio grow and flourish in positive ways. This project does not benefit any of us, the town or the residents of North George House. I can't help but wonder if this project would even be considered if it was on the other side of 64 or 264. Let's all work together to build Manio for all. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Philip Spinella, and I own Ronna Phil's Body Shop, 710 Highway 64. Just right next door to the property that they want to develop and put up the building. Add to the building, the existing building, and combine the two lots, which is not talked about a lot, and bring that building closer to my property line. And in turn, they're going to have to fill that lot and bring it up. And where's the water going to go? That's what I keep saying. Where's it going to go? They did just dig the ditches recently. That water goes north, not south, like everyone thinks that the water's supposed to go towards the library. It doesn't go towards the library. It goes the other way. They clean the pipes. There's a ditch. But behind that Manio, the motel there, the Island Motel, the ditch stops. The pipe is blocked. It doesn't go to burn site like it looks like it does, but it does. It stops. I know that because I stood down, watched the water. It does not move. So there's either a clogged pipe, the pipe has collapsed, whatever reason. But we have a water problem, and we know that. On the other side of the highway, on the east side, by the lawyer's offices, you know what I'm talking about. They cleaned everything to there, but from there to the sand, I don't know what's going on. I don't know if anybody knows what's going on, where that water goes. So I think we need to address. Manio needs to either, Manio does the water management, or the county does. There's a road, and the road is the divider. The county is pushing the water to Manio. When they brought in, oh, 50 loads, 50 truckloads of sand to fill the property, and now all that water comes to the other side of the road, there's no water management at all. So I've been flooded twice. File two flood planes. I'm tired of flood planes. It shuts me down. I can't make money while I'm cleaning up. It's a mess, and it's going to happen. Every time the water comes within a half inch of coming in my shop, I get a little nervous. You know, if we can get the water to come away, but I don't see that happening. So it's a problem. We live on an island that's sinking, you know? Okay. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Cahill, and I reside at 720 North George House Street. Ms. Melissa came over to our house just this afternoon to say that there's this meeting. I went on the website and reviewed all the information that was on the information packet. And the first thing I noticed was the preliminary plot map. I'm sure everybody probably realizes it, but it doesn't show the 10 residential plots that sit directly across the street from that new proposed building. As Melissa said, there are three motel hotels. Two are within walking distance, and one is within a half mile that's being renovated right now. So the need for that type of a transient weekly, daily rental isn't there. But the biggest problem I see, even the property that they own down further where the wildlife management used to be, then they have the, where the law offices are right now, and the apartments that are behind that, the traffic there is crazy, especially when there are little kids around. Sometimes the traffic comes in so fast. I cringe sometimes when I'm walking my dog, seeing and watching some of these small kids that are around. And then the other part is can the sewers handle such a large project out there? Certainly doesn't do much for our flood plain, because that certainly doesn't work. We, every now and then, we become, I have a motor surrounding my house. I'm lucky that it doesn't go in it, but I said, sometimes I can't get out because of the water. And then my biggest thing is the possibility of tragedy occurring with the transient population. There was one young man, 7 or 8, and he ingested some. There was one young man, he was seven or eight, and he ingested some pharmaceutical products that nobody really knew what it was and that was found discarded by Elizabethanin. So the EMS were called, police were called, and he was taken to the hospital. He was very lucky that they were able to get to him fast enough. They were able to pump his stomach and he was fine afterwards, but they were found around Elizabethanin. And where it had more and more children starting to come up. And then also from the other blocks, it's now that school is back open and their friends are back again. There were quite a few kids on that block. And it's good to see because that shows it's a growing area, a friendly area. And I don't want to see that end also, especially like Melissa said. I agree with her, whatever, whatever she said. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a hot topic. Good evening, Mayor Owens, Mayor Protem Selby and Commissioners. I'm Karen Brown, President and CEO of the Outer Banks Chamber of Commerce. The Outer Banks Chamber represents 1,000 businesses and over 3,000 employees. The Outer Banks and Dare County are at a crossroads. Many of our employees who have called the Outer Banks home for years are at a crossroads. It is time, it is past time for our community to find a way to work together, to take bold steps to make changes to zoning ordinances to allow for rental communities to be developed in our area. Day after day, week after week, I hear stories of people who are losing their rental units and are finding themselves faced with the only option left being to live in their car, an RV, a hotel room at $3,000 a month if they want to stay here and be a member of the Outer Banks community. I've heard of an employee living in a warehouse on a blow-up mattress waiting to find something to rent. A nurse who is living in an RV, a business owner who closed up his business and relocated to Florida because he can't find employees, and a single mother who doesn't know where she's going, and the list goes on. In many cases, children are involved. Have you looked at social media? The desperation will keep you up at night. People need housing options. We cannot fault those who are selling their homes in the midst of a real estate boom. We need rental communities and yes, we need apartments to house our workforce. We need housing at all income levels. We are losing not only the service workers in the hospitality industry, our restaurant workers and our retail workers. We are losing professionals as well. Nurses, doctors, police officers, firefighters, teachers, bankers and more cannot find rental housing here or even in close proximity to the Outer Banks. When will we as a community stand up and take the bold and creative steps needed to address this issue? There are private developers like Saga ready and willing to help by taking on projects that will result in apartment units for our people. Maybe we fear the unknown. We fear what we do not understand. Did you know that the proposed project, project, if funded with low-income housing tax credits, would require those who want to live there to go through a background check, be employed in Dare County and be paying their bills? Did you know that these tax credits are used to fund the building of the project, not subsidized rent? Did you know that this project would be required to stay as rental units for 30 years? Did you know that the people living there would make anywhere from $15,000 to $55,000 a year based on the income statistics? Do I have fear? Yes, but my fear comes from the fear of our local economy collapsing. All economies are built like a house of cards. Those small businesses, their employees and their children make up the foundation. If that foundation continues to be eroded away because of this housing crisis, the house of cards will fall. We're not just asking Manio to take on this crisis. We've asked all towns in the county to participate in finding solutions. Kill Devil Hill has recently approved an apartment complex of 120. What a great step. If I can just finish one second story, I would ask you to be bold, be creative, get moving in the right direction before it's too late. I ask you to not only support Saga's request for a text amendment change so this project can move forward, but I would ask you to consider supporting any reasonable project, project that can help fill this gap in rental housing in the Outer Banks community. If you cannot approve the project as presented, think about how to meet with the developer and find a compromise that will work for everyone. A hard no is not the answer. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Duke Garrity. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. I watched the public hearing you had last month, the beginning of the month. I couldn't make it and not a lot to be added to it. This is a good project that, from the gateway. I've been here for 30 years and could not understand why we cannot get more rental housing for year-round people and our workforce. We have a good workforce. Some make money. Most could afford a rental income, but they'll never save enough money to own their own house. And we run into it over and over again, but the idea of paying 1,500, $2,000, $3,000 a month for rental housing for a family is just out of the realm. A lot of people have left. A lot of our members left with the last recession. We're trying to get them back. This project, we could tweak, tweak it a little bit and make it good. A few things wrong, but we need to pass the zoning text amendment tonight and get, get this project moving forward. And then we can work on the next step. I think it looks good. We need it and we need more rental housing, more apartment complexes in our county. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Warren Martin, 825 Buccaneer Village, Pirates Cove. I am not running for, I'm not running from. I was here in the mid-'90s, ventured to Rodanthe, and now I have returned. I'm especially pleased with the openness and professionalism that I have been treated to by each of you sitting up there as elected officials of the people. You can't turn your back on the will of the people. It's not easy, but you need to do. And as far as I have seen and am concerned, the past three years of my new residence, everything is working just fine. I have a question or a statement to draw to your attention. You can see I'm rotundly overweight. Sugar donuts, glazed donuts, bagels, et cetera. And I continue to support local businesses, even though my wife, Dr. Pharoah, continually reminds me to stay away from the two purveyors of celestial transportation in the community. I'm sure that the chief is aware of it. If you haven't seen it, may you all stay away from a traffic overflow onto the highway as caused every morning, breakfast time, most of the time at noon and late in the day. Families are getting cuisine for the family for the next morning. There is going to be, if there has not been someone killed, hurt seriously, and perhaps maimed at that confectionery that I'm referring to. Thank you for your attention.
Only you, Warren. I said, only you.
Right, so seeing no other hands raised here in Town Hall, we're going to go to our virtual participants. So for those who are listening online or on their computer, please hit star nine on your phone or hit the raise hand button on your Zoom if you'd like to make a public comment. All right, we'll try, we'll try again. If anybody, give folks a chance to respond. Hit star nine on your phone to raise your hand, or if you're using Zoom in the online environment, just hit the raise hand button. All right, Mr. Mayor, it looks like we don't have anybody raising their hands.
We'll ask one more time. Would anyone like to be heard at public comment period? All right, we'll close public comment period.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six on the agenda. This is old business. So item number six A, this is the conditional use permit for 713, 715 North George House Street. In this particular case, we had, had the, had the evidentiary hearing process and starting now, the town, town attorney will lead the evidentiary hearing process. This was continued from the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Mr. Mayor, the last meeting that, as Mr. Ayers said, y'all tabled the public hearing and left it open. So what you would, again, this is a quasi judicial hearing on this conditional use permit. Your primary consideration is whether or not what the applicant has applied for, that he has proven that he meets the requirements under the ordinance to obtain that conditional use permit. And you need to do that based on sworn testimony that was given either at the prior public hearing or if there are new people here who are intending to testify. The reason you left it open was so that other people could come and testify. So if there are any of those folks here who would like to testify, you would need to have them sworn, ask them to testify. And again, remind them that the evidentiary consideration is information relevant to whether or not the requirements of the ordinance are met in order to issue the permit.
Okay, will we vote on this tonight?
You may.
Okay, I just wanted, the board probably knew it. I didn't know that voting for, to vote on.
Well, actually, let me think.
We need another here.
Actually, let me think that.
That's been going on for.
Yeah, let me think that through one more time because this is not a remote meeting. So because no one is, is Mr. Burt, Burton permitted, so he's not on. So this is not a remote meeting under the statute. You don't have to provide the additional 24 hours period to provide comment. So you can close the hearing and make a decision.
All right, can, we got to have a vote, close the hearings, right?
I, I would ask first if there was anyone else to provide testimony.
You handle this, if you will.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I want to be strictly legal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're considering again the conditional use permit related to 713 and 715 North George House Street. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to give testimony on this conditional use permit application, if you could stand up, allow the clerk to swear you in and provide your testimony.
If you want.
It's up to you.
Were they sworn? Were they both sworn?
They were sworn last time, but, but that doesn't, I would, I would re-swear them and I would, I would caution to not take specific consideration of their public comment.
Yeah, I have the notes, my notes from the last meeting here with me, so I'm just making sure.
Yes, ma'am. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, Mr. Mayor, I'll give it back to you and let you close the public hearing.
Let me ask the board, would you like, go ahead and finish this up, not one way or the other, continue later date. It's up to the board. Here, we should finish it up. All right, board action, we'll, I guess we'll take a vote.
I'll take a motion.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor and Mayor Protem. In this case, if you want to go ahead and declare the, the hearing closed, Mr. Mayor, then at that point you may entertain a, a motion of second on the initial use permit. That's all right with you, Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. If you, if you don't, if you, if it's all right with you, then though you're considering the, the, the hearing closed?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And then if a member of the board would like to make a motion regarding the denial or approval or with conditions, there are scenarios available to the board, depending on whether they want to deny it or approve it.
I move to deny the conditional use permit for the most families used at 713, 715 North George House Street based on the adoption of the findings of fact assistance with the evidence presented by the town.
All right, the motion is your second.
Our second.
Christine?
Yes, sir.
Motion seconded by Christine. That we vote on the conditional use permit, George House Street. On, we take a poll, Jerry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Hi.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Hi.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Hi.
Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Hi.
All right, Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
Conditional use permit is denied.
Next up on the agenda, item number six B. This is the zoning text amendment on Article 9B3 on the Entrance District. This one, there was a legislative public hearing last time that was, that was completed. And at this point, we have a town planner, Dickerson. Again, this was a legislative hearing, not a, not an evidentiary or quasi-conditional process.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this item is back to you all with a recommendation from the Planning Board for denial of the zoning text amendment, including the updated changes made by the applicant. I have provided to you on the dais at each of your seats a copy of the additional comments that were received by staff on the date of the public hearing of May 5. These comments have also been posted online and are available to the public. There's also a stack of those over on the table. This concludes my update to you on this matter.
Okay. I I'm going to make a few comments. Don't know how they're going to come out. I hate to disagree with the planning board, but I would like to make a suggestion. I cannot vote, as you well know, that we move to approve the zoning text amendment for apartments in B3 Entrance District, that we take a compromise from Saga. Instead of 22 units, we go to 12 units. And certainly everybody can sit down and work that out and see how it comes out. That's just a suggestion. We've got to have a motion one way or the other. So it's up to the board.
I don't believe that, that would have a go in front of the planning zone board before we make a decision on that.
No, it's been there twice.
I mean, we want to change the agreements of the of the conditional use.
I think we're just overriding the planning board, aren't we, James?
I'm not prepared to do that.
Yeah, the, they, I'm sorry.
Are you?
Yeah, but the, the this, the there was a consistency statement by the Planning and Zoning Board, whether it was consistent or not. For example, 2007 land use plan. And certainly the board can, can, can make its, make its considerations to approve or deny it as it stands. But I'm also hearing that there's, depending on what mode, even though there's not yet a motion on the floor, if we get to that point, then it can be determined whether or not, and at this point, though, they have seen it and they've made a consistent statement, the recommendation, so.
I, I think the, the board can disagree with the planning board and adopt what's been presented.
Yep.
We, we, we appoint the planning board.
Exactly.
The, the only question that comes up is if you, if you were to amend what was before you, there is the question of not, of whether, similar to what happened at the last meeting, where the applicants at that time brought significant changes at the, to the hearing essentially, because they brought them up to you a couple of days earlier. The law would provides that if the change is substantial enough, then it needs to go back to the planning board and the general. It's hard. My answer to this usually is that it's easier to send it back than to figure out whether or not it has to go back. There's a lot of gray area in the consideration of whether or not any particular change is substantial. The last meeting, for example, there was an initial change that was a small density change. And then there was a second change that added all of the affordable housing changes. The first one, I thought there was some potential that that would survive the issue of a substantial change. But once the larger amount of changes with the affordable housing came through, it would have been, in my opinion, that that was too substantial to not go back to the planning board. So what I'm getting at is the analysis of whether or not a change is substantial is complicated. So my usual recommendation is the way to solve that problem is to send it back. If that's not the board's will, I can give you my best, best shot at an opinion on whether or not the change is substantial if someone desires to make that motion.
Well, what I was going to suggest, this is just me continuing to talk, is that we do away with the affordable housing request and we continue our ass. and we continue asking the county to work with us and buy, or we work with them, rather, on the buyer's time project, which is all affordable housing. And which we would come into play as far as water and sewer is concerned and just drop the affordable housing down at the Saga project. And just ask for a compromise, I'm looking for a compromise in 12 units instead of 22.
I think the heart of, of what you're saying is to find a, you know, not just black and white, yes, you know, right? I, I think as it stands, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not in support of it, but I don't want to say, no, let's do nothing there and stop you from being able to develop your, your land. And, you know, there, there's, it's a send it back, yes, or send it back, no. And then, and then we say, no, we're sending it back again. There's got to be something, there's got to be a way to dig deeper. And, you know, we make, to offer up specific changes, well, then all of a sudden, you know, we don't know what, what you want to do and what works on paper for you. So we've got to figure out a way to work together to move something forward that suits you, that is gonna also suit our town.
I, I kind of feel like we should, I don't know if it's proper, since we're not, but at least give some direction for moving forward, what we feel like as the board of the town needs that community, future community to look like. So if it's going to 12 units per acre and not exceeding our 20,000 square foot building capacity, something of that nature, I think it needs some direction in order to proceed, if that makes sense. Instead of just saying no or, or whatever, something to kind of narrow down what our vision is.
We, we just well face reality. I'm pretty old and been around a long time. I've seen a lot of things happen. You try to stop projects and make projects go. Sooner or later, sooner or later, the projects will prevail. Somebody's gonna build something there, I don't know if it's gonna be Saga or who. But something's gonna go on that process. And I certainly am sympathy with the people out there in that area. I see where it's coming from, I do not blame them for fighting tooth and nail. But we have to have affordable housing in Dare County, and sooner or later, it's got to come. And I think we need to be prepared.
Is it possible?
Let me ask, excuse me. Ben?
Yes.
Are we allowed to get, let Sumit get in there?
I think you are, if you, if the board would like to hear from y'all can.
I'd like to hear from them.
And I think the best way to do that is to probably reopen the legislative public hearing and have him be able to talk. And then invite anyone else that's here to talk as well.
Would he have to sworn, he, he's sworn in once?
This is legislative, so it doesn't, it doesn't have to be sworn.
So make a motion to reopen the legislative hearing for the B3 Zone District comments?
That would be approved.
Wait, we, we gotta have a vote on, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Selby, Iron A. Commissioner, Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
This is just for the legislative hearing?
Yes, ma'am, just, just reopen the legislative hearing so more discussion can be had in a hearing format.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A. Commissioner Borland, Iron A. And Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carries, legislative public hearing is reopened.
Good evening, Mayor Owens and Mayor Pro Tem Selby, Commissioners. My name is Sumit Gupta from Saga Construction. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. I, I won't go into the hall, we, we've talked about this before, but I, I think it's important to kind of recap a few things. We, we, we put this property under contract not with the intention of doing apartments. And even though we're working on some apartments through the community, it's, it's a difficult measure. And on the development side, as there's not many apartments here and there's a lot of challenges, which I went over last time. But through talking to the community, there was a lot of push to, for the need of apartments. And we know it too well, we have an apartment community we developed in Kew, Dover Hills. And we see the dire need in talking to other businesses, talking to the Chamber. So this property, how at least I approached it, was there was a previous, it's a commercial property. It was in a previous approval with Salt Metal Landing. It was a mixed use development. Again, I wanted to point out with 34 multifamily units, about 24,000 square feet of commercial retail space, which could be about another 10, 15 businesses, and 100 seat restaurant. And as I was looking at it, I said, you know, what else could be done here? To do apartments under the current, there's really nothing about apartments. You have multifamily in your zone. And there's, there's a provision that for every multifamily affordable unit you develop, you can get a market rate. So from my understanding, that takes it from six to acre currently to 12 per acre. But that is addressed towards sale, nothing to do with rentals, you have to sell those units. So I looked at this, there's two directions with this. One, affordable is a relative term, but we applied for, this is when the TAPE group came, TAF Mills, sorry, TAF Mills came. I, I partnered with them, we submitted low income tax credit, which would allow us to do apartments all under $1,000. For that to happen was the basis of my tax amendment. It was, you needed a certain density, you had to get to 72, hence the 18 per unit. We had to, there was a certain building size you have to get to and just, you're just, and the lot coverage. We needed a commercial lot coverage on it. So that was the basis of the tax amendment. I fully understand it's a big change. And I, again, I think tax amendment should be looked at very carefully. As part of that, we tried to limit it to this, this particular zone, the B3 entryway, and really to this particular parcel in a way, to limit the impact. So with that being said, this is just an effort to try to do that particular development of rental houses that I would say are truly affordable. The way we written our tax amendment wasn't tied to that low income tax credit, because we don't know if we're gonna get that. So if we didn't, I still wanted to do some level of affordable. So we updated our tax amendment to address a density limitation of the 18 per acre and add an affordable component. If we got no tax credits or anything, that we still had to do some, that came into the, you know, $1,000 to $1,500 range. So I've heard some comments about that maybe too much or a compromise. If, you know, if there was a compromise and you guys were open to something, I would love to hear it. I'm also open, I'm not exactly sure how I could make it work, but if, let's say, 12 units, which I don't believe is a stretch, because there's a way to do for sale units of 12 units per acre. That is something that I know me and my group would move forward with. Likely, the TAF Mills group would be no longer involved, there, there would definitely be no more tax credits. It would not be traditionally affordable apartments. That would allow us to do 48 apartments at 12 per acre. I still believe apartments are better than other things that can be developed there on very limited parcels we have left, whether they're, you know, we need apartments of all levels. And, but I want to make it just clear, if, you know, at the 12, I couldn't make the affordable side working, say, you know, it has to be market rate. It's, it's difficult enough to make apartments work. There was another thing about the 20,000 square feet, and I know that's a big change as well, but that's what needed to happen to make the truly affordable and get the tax credits. I would still be willing to move forward if, if it was 12 and we took the 20, we went back to the 20,000 square foot. My plan would still be to build apartments. And, and if you were to approve that and put those conditions on, we still have, it's a conditional use, still you would have a site control over the site plan and, and we'd have to come back and do the architecture and you would still have to go through the whole process. So that's really it. I'm certainly open to any conditions or changes you guys would make, particularly those two, going to 12 and, and taking the 20,000 square foot, going back to the 20,000 square foot. So, and I would appreciate any consideration, any questions you have for me or any, I'm, I'm here. So, thank you.
Let me ask the board, I think it's proper, correct me if I'm not being, is it proper for the board to ask Sumit questions if they'd like?
I think that's fine.
Any questions the board would like to ask of, just Sumit?
In your text, the lowest price for a apartment, one bedroom apartment was over $1,000.
Yes.
And it would raise for, for every year after that, we got 4%. So eventually, that would not be affordable.
So the tax amendment, our primary goal, right in the tax amendment, the way it was, this was to fall under the low income tax credit housing, which has strict rules. Everything will be under $1,000 away. But there's no guarantee of that happening. So we written this tax amendment, the way it's as written, for the 72 units, that we would take a component of those, a third of those, and make them quote unquote affordable. Now, I know, again, it's a relative term, but right now, to develop, that's with no subsidization, no money, you know, it's all just private money going into it. It's very, very difficult to even get, you can't, you can't even get a one bedroom at a thousand bucks in a, in a housing development like that and really make the numbers work. So, but in, under that tax amendment, we were saying that we would take a third of them and fall. And there are some rules that housing in urban HUD has identified. So we fell under there, it was 80% median income, which is roughly in the $50,000 range here for a household. And they have set rates defined by that for one, two, and three, we followed those. Now, I can understand for a lot of people saying that, that's too much, and I'm not here to debate that. I just was trying to figure out a way on the complete private side to still make it work. And let me be clear on if there was going to 12 apartments and I would want to also, you know, remove the affordable component. And it would be market rate apartments here. And we'd be lucky to get that to work right there. I don't know if I answered your question on that or, but that was kind of where it started at.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to hear if the list of what changed, because I mean, we've been to about what we've considered.
Great. Thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Selby. So in this, in this particular case, I'm, I'm actually, I'm reminded, and I'm, I'm gonna come back to what Commissioner Mann mentioned earlier. And I, please, Commissioner, I'm not putting your words in your mouth, but you were talking about if, if our FROs made that there's a desire for direction. And I think that's appropriate in this case, because if this dialogue sounds to me, from my past in real estate development, this feels like a discussion of a compromise, but there's also negotiating. So I think it, Commissioner Mann commented, if there's a desire of the board to direct some kind of change to the proposed amendment, some form of compromise, it needs to come with clear direction, because our Planning and Zoning Board is not a negotiating group. I wouldn't, it would not be appropriate for them to do so. Also, the, as the town planner noted, had mentioned to me, if you all, you all may be aware, the Planning and Zoning Board looks at various things with regard to planning and zoning. Two things that they have been looking at, one is fill on lots, you know, and that, that's, and that expanding to things like wetlands, fill on lots, et cetera, that was a topic. And that's within their charter to look at planning and zoning in general things, which they may, which will bubble up to the Board of Commissioners. But the other thing, and they're looking at housing as well, so not just looking at housing and affordable housing, but also that's a chapter in our comprehensive plan, and so that'll become a process too. So if the board chooses to refer this back to Planning and Zoning Board, it probably should come with clear direction. I will also say the, we want to make sure we get direction on a lot of these, a lot of these things, because right now, it's not just density units. Making note there, it's not just affordability, the 20,000 square feet, the lot coverage issue is significant. That's, that's pretty significant. Also, the issue of the prior approval, that was done 15 years ago. So the Salt Metal Landing was 2006, I'm not sure that's necessarily a guide for us. So should the board choose referring, those are some of the issues I would, I think we would consider if, if we're giving direction back to PMC. Does that, does that say a fact, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, how about you, Melissa, that's what you will say? Because, see, here's why I asked this mayor and fellow commissioners, because we can make a decision on whatever today, but if it goes back to the plan, and I know it's, Melissa's the chair of that committee, I'm trying to cut through a bunch of red tape. I hear from them now and not later.
Sure, so, and I think it's fair, I've mentioned this to you recently, Mayor Pro Tem. You know, the planning board uses the Comprehensive Development Code to guide their decisions. So that includes the land use plan, the zoning ordinance. All of those documents, those five documents make up the Comprehensive Development Code. And thank you for attending the planning board meeting where you saw my general discussion on housing. So all of those plans currently have a six unit per acre density applied. And so I agree with the town manager, if you all want, and the planning board has, has, has begun its own discussion about housing. You will recall that I offered to the planning board, perhaps, of, of one consideration would be looking at the ordinance where there's a first floor commercial required with housing above it. You know, that's something that they said, you know, yeah, we should probably look at that, because the ordinance incentivizes that kind, that's why that additional lot coverage, 30% lot coverage is there, because the town, when it wrote these documents, was trying to incentivize that kind of development in the B2 and B3 district. So the planning board is continuing to consider things in the ordinance to ease some of these development tensions. And, you know, certainly, I, I see that conversation developing, but there, if you all want to look at increasing density per acre in the different districts in town, because those policies currently say six acres, you all should give a little direction back to the planning board on that, because the policies that they're provided with currently have, have that six units per acre.
Is it correct if it's for sale, it could have six units with six accessory dwellings, is that correct?
The, the affordable does give a, a one unit per, yes.
If it was a for sale and not an apartment building, it could be 12 per acre.
Yes. And the affordable housing ordinance, when it gives the density bonus there and then it allows lots to be smaller, allows lots to be 6,000 square feet versus 7,500 square feet, it, it does not talk about rentals. And so that is a, is a big change that I, I know, you know, may affect other potential developments in town too that are, will be coming to you.
I'd like to ask the planner, I think most commissioners know it, I just found it out. Most of this property in this area is owned commercially.
It is the B3 Entrance District?
Isn't that commercial?
Well, it is, but it also allows for single family homes.
Oh, yeah, I know that, but I'm saying if, if somebody wanted to build a garage or a warehouse down there, they'd be allowed to do it, if the planning board approved of it.
Well, it, it would be a conditional use permit for you all to approve, if it's an allowed use, and I don't have that ordinance.
In manual, everything is conditional use, isn't it?
Outside of a single family home, yes.
And we just denied a conditional use. Is some of that property beside the zone industrial?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, in the county, and I have that, a copy of that here, just adjacent, it is the I-1 Industrial District. So the properties just adjacent to this are, yes.
Can I, I mean, can we, like, maybe talk amongst ourselves for a minute? Because I'm, thank you, Melissa, James.
Thank you, Melissa, sorry, I just, you know, I'm not interested in.
Thank you, Melissa, sorry, I just, you know, I'm not interested in lifting the density. And I'm not interested in, you know, us sending it back to the planning and zoning again, until we maybe all can sit down together somehow. And I don't like the word compromise, but, um, you know, address the housing issue. Um, you know, I just feel like the affordable housing, um, if we change the density, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be affordable housing. Um, and I only feel like one person that even lives in town supported the program, uh, or the project, that, uh, that spoke to me. Um, and everyone else was against it. And so, right now, I, I'm not in favor of the project as it's presented.
I haven't found it that way, Christine, the people I've talked to, and I think I've talked to just as many as you, not more, but, uh, I find it for affordable housing.
Well, maybe, maybe, of course, I mean, I'm, I'm for affordable housing, I wish my housing were, were affordable, but.
I don't mean affordable housing, because I think I excluded affordable housing in the beginning of the comments, that I said we need housing.
And, and I agree, we need housing, and.
But it's never gonna start until we grab it by the horns and grab hold of it.
But this back and forth between us and the planning and zoning, um, I just don't see where it's gonna work.
If it goes back to the planning board, it's gonna be turned down again.
That's what I'm saying, I think that we need to have some kind of, I, I don't know, some kind of, oh, oh, some kind of sit down here. I mean, I, I'm not really sure what we're trying to address here, if we're trying to address a project.
The audience, the audience, we need to stay out if you will please, understand, this is a meeting, and we have everybody talking.
No, I know, um, I mean, I'm not sure if this is a Saga project right now that we're, that we are, you know, trying to approve, or if it's an affordable housing project that we're trying to approve. Um, I mean, I don't have a problem with Saga at all. Um, and I don't have a problem with affordable housing. I just, um, you know, for one thing, the traffic is what, I, I, I cannot be in support of this project without a traffic study. Without, I mean, it, it's just a nightmare there. I cannot in good faith support that area, um, having more cars in that intersection at all. That's just one of the many issues that I have there.
We would have a prob, traffic problem regardless, because with COA, it was up, it's gonna certainly increase, you know.
That's not gonna be at the intersection where people are already.
And what specifically do you want us to talk about?
I don't want us, I mean, I, I don't know that I want us to talk about, I want all of us to come together. Um, and, you know, if, I mean, the mayor is saying, throwing out a 12 unit compromise, that's, I don't, I just don't feel like that's appropriate.
Who is all of us, the planning and us?
Planning, zoning, Saga, the county, I mean, people that we are actually, that need housing.
Well, you know, the six people gonna have to make that decision, the town can't make it for us.
Well, then, right now, I, I'm not prepared to approve it.
If, if we would sit down with the community, which would be ideal, it would be total chaos, both sides. And I can assure you, there'd be just as many for it as it is against.
I've not, I, I've heard from one person, and that was Nicole Thrash, spoke at the last meeting, she's the only person I've heard that lives in town that has supported it.
I know, I talked to someone who was for it, I don't know when he was.
Okay, well, then you can vote in favor of it. Being elected by the people that voted for me, if anybody wants to come to me and tell me that you support it, I will welcome that, but right now, I don't have anyone who has personally come to me that has supported it.
All I'm trying to do is dispense of it one way or the other, there's an old saying.
I would love to.
Some you win, some you lose, and some are rain diet, and I could care less. I've made my statements, I feel about it, and that's where I stand.
Well, what's before the board tonight is to approve or disapprove this tax amendment, and that's what we should do right now.
Right. Either, uh, or die.
I think where it gets, you know, and, and maybe, I, I, I'm not sure of the best way to move forward to Christine's point. Overwhelming, what I've seen and received, and the, you know, emails and emails and emails, and I apologize to, but, at, at first, I was replying back to all of them, and somebody came in, but, um, so appreciate everybody's feedback, but it was mostly, um, and the folks in town, it was almost all against it. Now, it's against it as presently presented to us. Um, so then you get into that negotiation, and, um, you know, not to acknowledge the, uh, the audience, but, uh, you know, some kind of workshop or, or way to move forward. I don't know, I, I don't know what that looks like, or, like Eddie said, you know, staying in front of the growth, and what, what is, what do we want that to look like, um, out there? And so any changes to help guide that, um, and work with Saga. Um, so I don't, I don't have answers just rambling, but I mean, just to kind of bridge the gap there between, you know, it has been overwhelming against it, and that's who we serve, as it stands in front of us. Um, you know, it, it doesn't look good, if it's, if it's just flat out yes or no.
And I'll give my opinion here, uh, so as it's presented, I would say, no, I'm against, uh, what's presented. But I think there needs to be some clear direction of, um, no to this, but what could they do that looks more in tune to what our beliefs and, and values are of a, what should they be allowed to do, how many units per acre, how many, how much capacity? I, I understand it's not.
Six.
Well, s, could be 12 if they did.
It could be.
Yeah. So it's, it's just how you look at it, we do need affordable housing, and I say, I'll say affordable housing, we need a housing, we have a housing crisis. Uh, affordable is different to me than somebody else, and, um, I'm cheap, so the dollar menu looks good to me. Uh, but housing would help. And then hopefully, we can get to affordable housing somewhere else, but I think we need to look at some kind of direction to send this to whoever, um, and I think now's the appropriate time to do it, we're all here, but, um, 12 units per, per acre would not be any different if they did a, a for sale housing. To, so to me, I don't see a difference there, whether it's apartments or a for sale, uh, per acre units. So I'm okay with a 12 unit per acre thing, so, again, I guess I'm saying no to this, but some direction moving forward. They should be given a clear, um, path.
Then, before we, if we're gonna vote, and Darrell says he's correct on the tax amendments, either for or against, would it be out of order, or would it be in place? Or could we ask Saga if they had any suggestions that they could come back and re, readdress this and relook at it? Would that be in order or out of order?
Mr. Mayor, for this, I think.
I had to ask you, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, in watching this, that it's another opportunity where there's a thousand different ways to skin the cat.
You're right.
And, and I think this is a, a common issue that I see, is that developer initiated applications are, you know, as Mr. Gupta pointed out, he looked at it from what he wants to develop, so he developed his application for a tax amendment to fit that. And that may not always be what a town council wants, although what a town council might want, if it pushes the development, pushes the changes, might ultimately work for a developer. But it sounds like to me from listening, that what you're, what you may be thinking of is to change the direction of who's pushing for potential changes, so that you get to guide it in the manner that this body would like to guide it, rather than, and, and that may, that would potentially include talking with Mr. Gupta, Saga, with any other developers who may be interested in trying to figure out, uh, what you want, and what will actually accomplish, that somebody can actually do. Because if you adopt things that are a bunch of what you want, but nobody can do it, it doesn't work. And if you adopt things that are a bunch of what everybody can do, but it isn't what you want, that's not gonna work. But I think that the opportunity for doing any of those type of things is, is there. And I think that what you could do tonight is, uh, you, you got the same choice as you had last time, vote it up, vote it down, send it back, send it back with directions, or vote it up, vote it down, and then make another motion, or have another discussion, or set another agenda item for the future, to talk about how you want the, you know, as a board, as a body, want these changes to happen. But I think you could do any of those different things.
No, let me ask you one other question, we're operating under conditional use as a rule. Conditional use is just what it is, we control conditional use, don't we, or not, planning board and us?
Not exactly.
Okay.
The, the way the.
You answered me, I didn't know.
Yeah, the conditional use permit, the way it works is.
I mean, I'm saying, we, we got the building department, we got the zoning planning board, and we've got two or three options other than that, to control what goes there within reason.
Yes, sir.
Am I right or wrong?
Yes, sir, you, what you do is you see conditional use permits, you're the deciding body, so ultimately, you have the decision. But the way the law works on that is, if the applicant meets the requirements of the ordinance, then you don't have much choice but to grant the permit, however, you do get to add conditions on it. One common misconception is that you can add conditions that allow you, someone to change the, the requirements. But that's not how it really works under the law, the way that works is that there are certain requirements in the ordinance, like you dealt with tonight with the prior conditional use permit, where there was a density requirement. If that density requirement was met, and all the other requirements were met, you've got to grant it, but you can set conditions on top of that about lighting and parking and things that, that relate to zoning related matters. And, but this board is the body that deals with conditional use permits in Mania.
I think, you know, I mean, we, we, we can simplify this a little bit, right? Um, you know, we, first, separating from affordable housing, I, I think, um, you know, which not everybody wants to hear, but, um, you know, and, and maybe we are or aren't down the road, but there are other affordable housing, we, we've, we've got projects we're working on, on property we just annexed, that Bowser Town Road keeps coming up, and I think we should continue to, um, try to partner with the county on that. Um, so setting that aside, I think is, again, it, probably don't want to hear it, but the action that I would look at is to say, you know, no to this, but not sending it back to planning board. Maybe having agenda item next month to say, to vote on how we can move forward, to start to steer, um, what that looks like, and, and come up with a plan, how we can possibly partner together with the property owner in this case. You know, that would, that would be my suggestion, and then, you know, just so I don't forget it later, traffic is something else that comes up with all this stuff. Um, the 20-year working group plan, um, you know, we did look at, there's something that was back then, that, um, was in there again, and it, it's, it's a little bit out of our control, but, you know, there was brought up connecting, um, some roadways that would pretty much go all the way through and drive some of that traffic over, um, west of the highway, and, you know, that was, we have the, the roundabout there, which is beautiful, and, and, you know, kind of, you know, pressure was put on to do that, to show what it could look like all the way through. And, um, that's a, that's a heavy lift to work with the OT and pull that off, but I think that we should start to work on that, whatever all this growth looks like, that's an item too, not to get too far down another road.
Well, we can go on all night long, uh, I've said my piece, Christine said hers, others said theirs, and, uh, so what does the board want to do with this item?
Given what I just said, and with the hope that we could possibly move forward in another way, I move to deny zoning tax amendment for apartments in B3 entrance district.
Okay, it's been denied, has, is there a second?
A second.
All right, second by Darrell, uh, we.
James has got something.
Go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is just a point, a point of order. In this particular case, it's a zoning tax amendment, and there is additional language that would be required for us to, uh, comply with the ordinance. So in addition to the motion to deny, there needs to be a comment about whether it's inconsistent or not, reasonableness, et cetera. If it's all right, Mr. Mayor, if, if we may turn it back to the original, uh, motioner.
I need to read out, uh, the whole thing here.
Since you have a motioner and a seconder, Mr. Mayor, I believe the, the motioner would have to determine whether he wants to amend his motion, but then the seconder would have to, uh, accept that as well.
Are you denying it because, uh, since it can change to six or 12?
No, there's, there's, I don't think we can do that, there's a motion on the floor.
Um, and?
We have the expense of the motion, of course, it doesn't have a second, yes, yes it does, Darrell made a second. We have the expense of the motion.
All right. I, I move to deny the zoning tax amendment for apartments in B3 entrance district. The zoning tax amendment is inconsistent with the town's, uh, land use plan, including its, uh, significant expansion of, of density and, and related factors. Action taken is reasonable and in the public interest, because apartments as proposed in the zoning tax amendment application may cause impact to healthy safety, uh, health, safety, and welfare.
And I second the amended, uh, motion.
All right, the motion and second, take a poll, James.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Um, thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor Protem, my apologies. I get into a role, a role here, please forgive me.
Take a poll, James.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll continue on to Commissioner Walker, IRNA, Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Hi.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
All right, the, uh, the motion is denied, uh, the zoning tax amendment for B3 entrance district.
Sum, I do hope you come back with, yeah, compromise, I do hope you come back with.
May I say a few words real quick? So, thank you for your time in this right here, and I still believe some sort of apartments are, are in these limited parcels we have left that would be good. My plan will be to rewrite the tax amendment at 12 units, and take off the 20,000 square feet, uh, you know, this one, what I, I wrote, asked for 32,000. So I'm gonna stay within that and try to limit any changes other than the 12, and then the lot coverage to be able to build apartments. Uh, so, that's my plan, I wanted to say that. Uh, and I do want to reach out, before I do the tax amendment, I would love to sit down with some of you and get more input. Uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I just, be, before you walk away, I want to say that I know the project would be beautiful, and it's nothing, again, against you or your, your company. I just really have an issue with the traffic there, I mean, if it, if we were looking at a totally different site, you know, I, I really, I, I don't think I would have as much heartburn as I do right now, but I just don't believe that that is the right location. Where, and that, you know, is really what my, you know, opinion is.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, item number 6C on the agenda, this is the amended agenda, item C is Resolution 2021-04. For our listening public, this is a late addition to the agenda. Um, we, we believe this would be well received by the town, the public, and folks around, because the reason for this late addition is because the state opened its portal for the town to accept American Rescue Plan Act dollars. These are the federal dollars that are flowing through to states, counties, and cities. However, the portal just opened the state, and they are asking us to go ahead and submit our documents, so we can receive our funds, uh, that have been allocated to us. The North Carolina League of Municipalities estimates those, those payments, 215,000 this year and 215,000 next year, those are estimated payments. But we do need to submit our documents here in the next few days, so that's why it was a timely matter. Um, and these, uh, these are the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It, it, it makes the town, uh, accept these, accept these funds. Also, it authorizes the town manager or my successors to accept these funds on behalf of the board and the townsfolk, as well as to sign any paperwork that goes with those, those American Rescue Plan funds. So that's the purpose of Resolution 2021-04.
Do we have to vote to accept it?
Yes, sir.
All right, make a motion, somebody.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-04.
I move to approve Resolution 2021 04, approving the acceptance of funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and designation of the town official authorized to sign contracts and bind the town mania.
My second.
All right, motion seconded. As to the resolution, uh, take a poll, James.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA. Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. The resolution passes.
Yes. Next up is item seven on the agenda. This is mayor and commissioner comments.
Okay. My only comments, I've already made them. There's no hard feelings here. Some of them, some you win, some you lose, some are rained out. This one I lost. Uh, Protem Selby.
Um, first of all, congratulate, uh, who was it? The Mania Chief and his staff who was awarded from the league. I think that's, uh, wonderful, speaks about our police department, um, especially in the risk management. Um, so glad to see Patty getting the award from the town mania. That's all about community, so I appreciate that. I would say that, um, I certainly do hope Mr. Summit comes back within, um, within the guidelines of policy of the ordinance. Christine was still gonna be with the traffic problem, but I'd certainly hope, because we need affordable housing, and I, I think, as I stated before, there's a lot of talk about it, but no action. So now it's delayed again. Um, so I hope he comes back pretty soon, and he will probably have the same traffic problem. Thank you so much, Mayor, and my fellow commissioners. I know this is a hard decision and, um, making some people happy and some people sad, but we certainly need to address it.
All right, Christine.
Um, I've probably said enough already, but, um, I don't feel like we've lost. I mean, as far as the game, as far as right now today, um, I think we, you know, we still need to work on this, and, um, you know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but, um, you know, I agree. I hope that Mr. Gupta does come back, and I hope that, you know, we can all reach an agreement or, you know, find the best way to, um, address the housing issue. Um, so, you know, again, it, I just, uh, I do support affordable housing, and I just want it all to be done within the ordinances and all the other planning documents that, you know, we've worked so hard on our long-term planning and we just can't let that go. So, um, I feel like we do need to meet that. And in reference to the George Howe project, I just wanna thank you Phil and Melissa for coming out. Um, you know, I just, the whole flooding situation, you know, I deal with flooding where I am, so I understand that, so I don't want that to be an issue for anyone else. Um, you know, and again, I feel like Melissa, um, said it's, uh, is creating a short-term rental issue. It's not really, uh, helping our long-term, uh, housing, uh, issue that we have. So that's why I, you know, voted the way I did for that. And I just had one other little thing to add about the town common. Is there anything we can do, maybe, um, are we having fountains there, like a drinking fountains or like dog fountains, water fountains?
Yes, yes, thank you, Commissioner Walker. Yes, that's a part of our phase two plan to have restrooms, drinking fountains, shade structure and other things. And, and so that's, that's in the plan for phase two, and since we got the grant, we're able to move forward with it.
Can I just thank everybody? It was a great, great time, uh, opening up the common last week.
Darrell?
The Johnny Robbins issue with the, um, parts cut a lot. I think we need to give him a fair shot at, uh, trying to present his ideas to the, to the plant, the planning and zoning board. So I think we need to go ahead and let him, uh, let the planning and zoning board look at what he requested to us. Does that need to be a motion?
Can we have a motion?
I don't think it needs to be. I don't think, I don't think you should have one, but I think your point's well taken. I will say this with Johnny here, I support what he's trying to do. I do not support the way he's going about it, but I support what he's trying to do because that whole area was marsh at one time, and it was changed. But I don't, I don't know how you're gonna, how we're gonna do this. If he wants to make a motion, you can't do it during, during this.
Yes, sir. And, and if, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor and, and Commissioner.
Am I allowed to give him privilege as mayor?
Oh, um, y- y- you, you may assist to this, unne- a motion's unnecessary. Uh, the planning and zoning board will hear if, if, if the, if the inquiring party submits an application to the town mania, we will expeditiously, uh, the planning and zoning board, it will be on their agenda for hearing. Um, so if, if the request is to have planning and zoning board hear it, that's certainly, certainly the opportunity. Also, if the perm, if it, as opposed to a permit application, if it's a zoning text amendment or other things, uh, there obviously been, a lot of opportunities to have, to have this heard, that planning and zo- that those examples would go, um, the example of a zoning text amendment, of course, planning and zoning, and then that would, that would come through to the board of commissioners afterwards, just like these other zoning text amendments. If it's not a zoning text amendment, or as we heard before, if there's a CAMA permit applied for, and this becomes just a single-family permit, that's a different process. But there are processes depending on which way the applicant decides to go.
Okay. You, Darrell, satisfied?
Well, uh, so he has the opportunity to present his, his evidence to the planning and zoning board for consideration and recommendation.
Well, the planning and zoning board will hear an application, whether it's a zoning text amendment, or if, if he gets his CAMA permit and he, and then in that case, it's a different scenario if he then submits a building permit. But at this time, again, there's been no application made to the town mania for either of those scenarios. Um, so, so, but when, when that times, time comes, it will be heard either by planning and zoning and board of commissioners, or planning and zoning, or staff. So at this point, we don't know which, which direction, uh, that, that is going to, to go. Um, so there's not a need to refer anything to planning and zoning because there's right now nothing to, nothing to refer.
Help me out, Attorney.
I'm not a contractor. That's not what I've been told today. I would have done that months ago, and I'm not gonna tell you that today. I've told the officer that I haven't made permission for jobs, and that's why I've gone back, and that's where my question is.
See, this is what I don't want, what we're getting ready to start right now. James is taking his head, no, and you're saying he did. So I don't know who to believe.
I think I can answer Commissioner Collins' question. I, I think, uh, if we backtrack to what, um, Mr. Robbins was asking for at the last meeting, was a consideration by the town of changes to the land use plan. I'm not sure if there's an application process for doing that. You, you may be able to treat it similarly to a zoning process, but if the board as a body wishes for there to be a change to the land use plan to solve the issue that Mr. Robbins is talking about, my recommendation would be, be a motion to direct staff to prepare something and take it through the process, which staff would prepare that. It would go to the planning board. Mr. Robbins would have an opportunity to speak there. There would be a, there would be a public hearing at some point before y'all, and Mr. Robbins would have an opportunity, just like the public, to speak there. But then, much like what we were talking about a moment ago with the, the, um, apartment complexes, it would be something that the town would be driving the answer to the question in terms of the specifics. Um, but, um, that would be my recommendation if the interest was to make a change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may add on to Town Attorney Gout, that, that is absolutely correct. That's actually a third, a third mechanism by which, by which a, this issue could, could be discussed and put in a different way, that of course, that referral to planning and zoning would be heard by them. I'll also note the planning and zoning had already been, had already been discussing the issue of fill-on lots and related matters, uh, the last couple of meetings, and of course, the inquiring party was invited to participate in that. So that is a third mechanism, which is certainly, certainly appropriate. So there are, again, it sounds like there are three different mechanisms in this particular case. So, um, I certainly concur with, uh, the town attorney's, uh, suggestion of that third alternative.
All right, Darrell.
I'll make the motion to, uh, proceed to the planning and zoning, um, for consideration of this text amendment.
To consideration of amendment of the land use plan.
Of the land use plan.
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll second.
All right, motion is seconded. That the, uh, matter go before the planning board? Darrell?
Yeah.
All right, you've heard the motion. Take a poll, James.
Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, IRNA.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, IRNA.
Aye.
And Commissioner Mann, IRNA.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carries with the win and a vote.
Okay, maybe we're moving on then. Eddie?
Did you go, you were? I didn't, but, um, sorry, I got sidetracked there. I appreciate, uh, Ms. Patty for coming out. It was a great presentation by the town manager for Ms. Patty. Thank her for her many years of service. I've, uh, for somebody like me, I feel like I've grown up with her. So it's nice to see her come out, and I see the town recognize her. I think we need to give, like Darrell's motion earlier to the planning board, we need to give the planning board some kind of direction for apartment long-term rentals. I don't know if that's the appropriate verbiage to use, but certainly something that's not gonna turn into a, uh, short-term rental, um, to compete with that market, but something for a, uh, long-term rental complex. Um, I think there's kind of a gap there from what I've read, and I'm not the smartest guy in the world, so, uh, I think we're missing a section there of our, uh, zoning text amendment where we need to add something about long-term, uh, rental units, and then look at the density, whether it's 12 units or whatever direction, um, the planning board needs to come up with, and then a density requirement as far as, um, square footage. I know this year, things have changed where there was like a density, uh, previously where if you had a business below, there's a, um, a change, but people now are working a lot from home with COVID. So things have changed where we're not necessarily in storefronts like we were 10 years ago, or even last year, for that matter. Um, so I think that's something that could also be addressed, where maybe not necessarily a density change for commercial residential above, but a full residential unit, what that looks like. So I hate to say no, and there's an open-ended, uh, you know, question, what can they do? I think we kinda need to drive what they can do or what they should consider doing. And I agree with the traffic study, does need to be done. And there is, uh, I'm actually reading over again, the, uh, plan update, and they address, um, traffic from the secondary roads, which is a possibility there. And then, of course, there's always, and affordable housing is like the number one thing that always comes up. And again, affordable is different for all of us. So I think we need to focus on housing, and then maybe the chips kinda fall where they may, where, whether, maybe I can afford it, maybe I can't, but we need to at least get some houses, um, to address some of that. So I hope this is not the end of that discussion. I hope it's a continuation, and maybe, uh, next meeting we'll have a, a clearer vision of what that looks like. Thank you.
Okay, James?
Yeah, I've got two things, and, and one, just like Eddie was talking about, you know, there's, there's growth and then there's planned growth, and, um, you know, I guess, I feel like the growth is, is the water coming through the dam, and we can just keep sticking our finger in it and trying to block it and move the bubble gum. Um, but eventually, like the mayor said, it's coming. So the difference is between getting out in front of it and making that planned growth and saying, let's direct where this water's gonna go. Um, and again, I don't, I don't know what that looks like action-wise in terms of getting in front of it and steering where properties like this go, but I think it's important to do that so that we, um, you know, our, the character of our town and, and what we have is, um, is our most important thing. We were talking before, and we don't have, we don't have, uh, sandy beaches and, and blue waters, and, and, uh, so all the character that the beach has, you know, ours is more, um, precious to us, and we, and we've got to protect it. Um, so I'd like to see some action on what we can do to, to try to steer that growth. And then the other thing, I just wanted to mention the town common again. Um, it was a, it is a great, great thing that happened out there, and, um, you know, I used the word compromise at first, because everybody, you know, everybody either wanted a parking lot and no park, or, or a park and no parking lot. And I said, what a great compromise we came up with here. Um, but it wasn't. It was, a compromise is two sides giving something up, and, um, it was more synergy, I guess, where the two sides created something that was better than either of them had. Um, it was, it was a really great thing, and I think, um, you know, all the politicians, you know, we, we got to stand up and get our, uh, applause there a little bit, but not enough went to, the process was, of course, James and, and everybody's hard work, but it was, it was involving the, the people, um, in the process that went through. And that won't work for every project, but hopefully that can be a blueprint that we follow on some projects moving forward, because it, it was really great what, what we came up with. That's all I got.
Okay. We will adjourn, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn till when, James?
Yes, sir. Our next, our next meeting, I believe, is on June 2nd at 6:30. That would be that first, first Wednesday.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn? We don't have any further business until June 2nd at 6:30?
Yes, yes, sir.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, we adjourned to, uh, June the 2nd.
Yes, sir.
Uh, take a poll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby, IRNA. Commissioner Walker, IRNA.